You should be in.
Okay.
Ready to go?
Yep.
Okay, it is 7:01 PM on Wednesday, June 10th, 2020, and we're opening a regular meeting of the Cogah Heights Board of Education. Mr. Muccio, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Eder.
Everybody's got to come off mute. You're muted, Mrs. Eder.
Hi, I am here, present.
Mrs. Schuker?
Here.
Mr. Sutchecki?
Here.
Mr. Naaman?
Here.
Mr. Dobbins?
Here, five present, none absent. On behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to today's Board of Education meeting. The Ohio Legislature passed House Bill 197 in response to the COVID-19 public health crisis. That bill grants permissive authority to define state and local public bodies to hold public meetings by way of teleconference or video conference until December 1st, 2020, or during the period of the COVID-19 emergency, whichever occurs first. In order to hold such meetings, the public body must meet the qualifications established in the bill related to providing adequate public notice, methods of public participation, and distribution of information and materials. The board believes it has satisfied all of 197's criteria to hold today's meeting by teleconference or video conference. A copy of the board meeting agenda is available to review on our school district's website. Would you join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you.
May I have a motion for approval of tonight's agenda? Moved. Mr. Naaman moves. Second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Muccio, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Naaman?
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins?
Aye.
Mrs. Eder?
Aye.
Mrs. Schuker?
Aye.
Mr. Sutchecki?
I'm sorry.
Aye.
I apologize. The motion passes 5-0. Comments from the public. The board values and encourages public comment on education issues and is now asking the public to email comments that it might have otherwise provided during the public comments portion of this meeting to the following email address, info@cuyhps.org. The board will strive to respond to all comments received as promptly as possible. Mr. Muccio, I believe you're up now.
Thank you, Mr. Dobbins. Couple items tonight for approval. For A, motion to approve the minutes of May 27th, 2020's regular meeting as found in attachment T1. Item 5A, motion to approve the attached list of purchase orders over 5,000 as found in attachment T2. 5B, motion to approve the Schools of Ohio Risk Sharing Authority Source Up renewal agreement with CF Risk and Insurance LLC effective July 1st, 2020. Excuse me, yeah, July 1st, 2020 to July 1st, 2021. Reliability insurance at a cost of $81,250 as found in attachment T3. Item 5C, as a result of Governor Dewine's state foundation aid cuts due to the COVID-19 pandemic, motion to authorize the treasurer to repay the total insufficient funds owed to the state during fiscal '20 using ODE's accounts receivable system. Cogah Heights Schools was officially notified, May 19th, 2020, that we will have insufficient funds owed back to the state as a result of Governor Dewine's announced $300 million fiscal '20 budget reductions. For the Ohio Department of Education, the insufficient funding owed by Cogah Heights Schools is estimated to be $194,946.90. The actual insufficient amount will be calculated by June 11th, 2020. Item 5D, motion to establish the CARES Act/ESER Fund, number 507. 5E, motion to approve new vendors to the school district for W9's attach as found in attachment T4. As for motions, 4A and 5A through 5D. So we have Mr. Naaman with the first part of it. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Sorry, I couldn't hear.
Mr. Dobbins, you're muted.
My apologies, I was muted. So we have a motion, it's been seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'll just go through these kind of quickly. 5A, purchase orders over 5,000. Nothing out of the ordinary, but we do have more than what we usually have. That's because we're ending fiscal '20 and beginning fiscal '21. So we're going to see a lot of our blanket utility purchase orders for electricity, gas, water, sewer. As we start closing out and beginning the next fiscal year. B is just our typical yearly renewal with Source Up. There is a cost increase from prior year, but that was due to a valuation that was done by Source Up. They actually had an outside vendor come in, CBiz, I believe was the vendor that they had. They did a valuation of our entire property and actually increased our valuation by doing that, which in turn increases our premium. 5C is just what we went over at the last board meeting, authorizing the treasurer to pay off in this fiscal year the balance owed to ODE for those Governor Dewine state foundation aid reductions that we have. 5D is just the establishment of our CARES Act fund, which is going to be fund 507. I just want to point out that the amount that we will receive from the CARES Act funds is $61,034.41. The time period is March 13th, 2020 until September 30th, 2022. And our preliminary plan at this point is for the purchase of supplies to clean and sanitize the facilities from the impact of COVID-19. Item E is just the approval of vendors, and we just have one on there.
Okay, very good. Mr. Muccio?
Yes.
I have a question on our Source Up insurance contract.
Yeah.
In your meetings with the Source Up representatives, has there been any discussion about the scope of the policy relative to what's been going on with the COVID crisis?
There has, yes. What Source Up is doing is they're writing language into renewal policies that takes away any coverage for the coronavirus. So they're doing that as a standard baseline for all schools. I believe many other insurance carriers that deal with schools are doing the same thing, but Source Up is writing out any inclusion of coronavirus claims.
Okay, all right, thank you for clarifying that. It's, I'm sure it's on a lot of people's minds.
Yes, yep.
If there's no other discussion, we can proceed to a vote then?
I had a question on something.
Sure.
The Rock the House, the group that's going to be doing the virtual graduation for us?
Yes.
Is that being paid by, through our general fund or is it being paid through the senior class?
That's being paid through the senior class. It's the class of 2020 is the fund that that's coming out of.
Okay. And the other thing is, is I thought the information that you sent us earlier about it was more specific about their response, what they're actually doing. I'm worried about whether they're going to edit this virtual graduation piece and if they're going to provide copies to people.
Absolutely, they're going to edit it. We're not going to provide the copies until after the July 19th ceremony. So we're going to put it together and we're going to still move ahead and with the assumption that we can pull this off on July 19th. We'll know by July 1st whether or not we will, because if they extend the mass gathering like they did to July 1st, no more than two people, then we won't be able to get a plan approved, so we're hopeful. But they're absolutely, they have been, I talked to Mrs. Voitek today. They have been wonderful to work with. They're going to do this however we want it done, and we're going to give them specific dates. We've already told them when we want it done by and then when we'll distribute it by, so.
Okay, I was just, I was just want clarification, because when I read the invoice or when I read the description of what they're doing, they had no mention of editing, and editing's a big thing, so.
Yeah, they're going to, they're going to actually, they're going to piece this all together, because the senior, the class officers are speaking at the end, and then they're going to, we're going to give them a program as to how we would normally go through our graduation, and then they're going to splice the speeches together, like my introduction of the valedictorian and salutatorian. I can do those separately, and then they're going to splice it in. So just like our graduations have gone in the past, the agenda-wise, they were going to follow that when they put it together.
Okay, sounds good.
Very good. Are there any other questions or comments about the treasurer's consent agenda items? Okay, if there are none, then Mr. Muccio, please call the roll.
Mr. Naaman?
Aye.
Mr. Sutchecki? Mrs. Eder?
Aye.
Mrs. Schuker?
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins?
Aye. The motion passed as 5-0. Moving on to treasurer's discussion and comments.
Just have two items for tonight, just wanted to update the board. We are in process of closing fiscal year '20, and for everybody in the public watching, our fiscal year always begins 7:01 and it ends 6:30. Some items that we're doing right now as we're closing out, as we're closing out purchase orders, we're paying remaining invoices, we're closing out grants, we're reviewing all of our, we're reviewing our GAAP budgets that we have, and we're finalizing NWO reports to Cogah County's Budget Commission. At the same time that we're closing fiscal year 2020, we're starting fiscal year 2021, the new fiscal year, which is going to start 7:01. Some of the items that involve the starting up process deals with entering new payroll contracts, entering new accounts and budgets, entering new purchase orders, which we just approved tonight, and entering in the new grants that we have. Just wanted to kind of update everyone on that. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the superintendent's business, agenda item 8.
Okay, 8A, motion to accept the voluntary reduction in pay requested by Superintendent Tom Evans for foregoing a scheduled increase for the 2020-21 contract year and authorize the direct, direct the treasurer to implement said reduction for the period indicated. B, motion to approve a one-time carryover of up to five vacation days from the 1920 contract year to 2021 contract year for the attached list of exempt staff. This is a one-time circumstance due to the COVID-19 pandemic. 9, agreements, contracts, and membership. 9A, motion to approve an agreement with the Ohio Department of Education, Office of Child Nutrition for participation in Ohio USDA Child Nutrition Program for 2020-21 school year at no cost to the board. B, motion to approve the attached agreement with the United Cerebral Palsy Association of Greater Cleveland for therapy services for 2020-21 school year. C, motion to approve the attached agreement with PSI affiliates to provide nursing services to the school district for a three-year contract effective August 1st, 2020. D, motion to approve the attached agreement for 2021 with Timothy O'Keefe to research students as listed on the SF-14 and SF-14 age to ensure the educational services each student's receiving is being built to appropriate school district. E, motion to approve the renewal of maintenance agreement with Republic Services of Cleveland for trash pickup services district-wide during 2021 at a cost of $6,511. And F, motion to approve a contract with Rock the House Entertainment Group for videography to record students receiving diplomas and virtual streaming of graduation on June 14th, 2020 at a cost of $3,000. 10, employment supplemental positions. 10A, motion to approve the attached list of individuals on one-year limited supplemental contracts for 2020-21 school year contingent upon successful completion of BCI FBI print checks and proper certification if applicable. B, motion to approve employment of Carolyn Douglas for up to five days at her daily rate to be used for transitioning the new guidance counselor to be taken before the start of the 2021 school year. And 11, employment substitutes as staff needed, motion to approve employment of Bev Didio as bus van driver for 2020 summer camp on an as-needed basis for the adopted hourly rate. I ask that those motions be approved.
Very good. May I have a second on that?
Who gave the first? Are you giving the first, Mark?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the superintendent's consent agenda. Ms. Schuker, seconds. Is there any discussion?
Okay, going back on that, that's the, the five-day carryover was the same thing we approved for Chase last week, and that affects the people that would be eligible are Kathy Martin, Yelixia Rodriguez, Jim Zerbola, Greg Marsznick, Joy Houchen, George Bjerg, Dave Wallace, Matt Hartman, Matt Muccio, and Tom Evans would be affected by that motion. The USDA Child Nutrition Program Agreement is the standard agreement. There's no cost to it. That's just saying we're going to follow the guidelines with the state. UCP Services, United Cerebral Palsy, this is an annual contract we have, and that's as need, as we, as assigned. PSI affiliate for nursing and medical attendant services for a three-year period. We signed a three-year contract with them, locked prices in. I will tell you right now that, that we know that, that we're going to be about 20,000 less this year, because one of our students that was using an aid graduated, so we won't, unless another student comes onboard that needs that aid, we, so that bill will actually be less this year than it's been the last couple of years. D, approved agreement with Timothy O'Keefe, research appropriate billing of students. Tim's been, done a fantastic job for us, and you know, that was Joe Burgans fine for us, Joe knew Tim, and he does a great job. I, I talk to Tim twice a year, and it's, it's like kind of getting a Christmas gift, because he tells me how much money we're getting from, that he's found for us, so. Service agreement with Republic Services, that we're part of an OSC, so that's our, for our trash pickup. Contract with Rock the House Entertainment, we talked about that previously. That's for filming the virtual ceremony. Supplemental staff contracts for 2021, there's, I think, four in there. Team leader, Kendra DeVito for seventh grade, assistant volleyball coach, Logan Skreptak, high school boy soccer scorer, Noah Lipkowski, and a ticket taker as needed, Monica Bartosik. Then Carolyn Douglas for transition days with the new counselor. I'll be conducting the final interviews this Friday for the counseling position. Carolyn will spend some time this summer to make sure we hit the ground running with our new counselor in place. And bus driver for 2020 summer camp, we're not, I think that's still up near as well, whether or not that's going to run, but we'll put that on there. If we need Bev, we can use Bev. That's on an as-needed basis. So I ask that those items be approved. Are there any questions about any of those?
Well, before we proceed to a vote, I, I want to thank Mr. Evans for your very kind and gracious and thoughtful act of foregoing your contractual pay rate for the following year. I very much appreciate it.
I just think, current circumstances, that's the right thing to do right now for me, so we'll get through this together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I wonder if anyone else will follow your lead, because that's a really generous gesture on your part. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
With that in mind, too, do we have any, any language in place? If these, I know there was only one coach on the supplementals that we're talking about today, but if the, something happens like COVID or COVID continues that prohibits coaches to do their full performance of duties?
Yes. The language will actually be in their individual contracts that they receive, that we got from John Britton, just saying that if, if the seasons don't take place, that they're not going to be paid for. They're, I'll try and forward that to you. John did a real nice job of drafting out some language that will be in, in their individual contracts. So everyone, as they sign their contract, they will know that that's the, those are the guidelines for the, for the contract.
Thank you. It just seems like in these times, we need to find and watch every penny that we have.
Absolutely.
If there's no other discussion on the superintendent's consent items, we can proceed to a vote. Mr. Naaman, or I'm sorry, Mr. Muccio, please?
Mr. Dobbins?
Aye.
Mrs. Schuker?
Aye.
Mrs. Eder?
Aye.
Mr. Sutchecki?
Aye.
Mr. Naaman?
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0. Mr. Evans, discussion and comments?
Just a few things, as far as back to school, still nothing from the governor. I, unfortunately, I wish these groups could arrange it. I was on, I had a Zoom conference going with the First Ring superintendents at the same time I had a phone conference going with the Alliance today. For whatever reason, they were both at 10 o'clock, so I was, I was double dipping, I guess, and trying to follow both, but, and it's almost a little bit humorous, because one group's, Eric Gordon is very connected from Cleveland in the First Ring, and then Tony Potajol, the Alliance, actually is part of that, that group that sits down with them. So just to hear both of them in the same meeting and maybe hearing things even a little bit differently. So what we, what we do know right now is that, is that the governor and Ohio Department of Health, their, their guidelines will be separate from ODEs, and they're not going to group those together, but there's still many, many issues to be resolved. They said it could be tomorrow, it could be a week, it could be two weeks. Obviously, the later it goes, the more difficult it gets for us to, to put a plan in place and to work on that, but I'll, I'll get to the work group here in a little bit. Even down to the transportation. Now, we've heard so many different numbers of kids that you're going to be able to put on a bus. One group said, and it's still a huge issue, that one group's saying that, that we think we can get one, one seat, one kid per seat on a bus. And another group's saying, well, we're still pushing for two per seat on a bus. So we, we know that we can't even teach them until we get them to school, so they haven't even gotten through the transportation piece at this point in time, so we anxiously await that. I'm going to have an initial meeting of the work group next week, just to, I, I think people are getting antsy, just to talk about, you know, what's, what's out there right now, what the draft said several weeks ago. And they purposely threw the draft out and kind of stood back and then just listened to the fireworks, and they took a lot of grief over a lot of the things that were in the draft, because they were relatively extreme. Like I said, four kids or whatever, six kids per bus, and just things that were just not doable in any way, shape, or form. So still a lot of details to be worked out as far as, you know, social distancing in the building, mandatory mask, not mandatory mask, and that, that's going to be a battle all the way down to the end, so we'll, we'll stay attuned to that. What's that?
Can I add some stuff?
Sure.
To your discussion on that? I'm sorry to interrupt.
No.
In being in the interviews the last two days, some of the things that were interesting that were shared, and, and please, Mr. Dobbins, let me know if I'm getting this wrong, but we were hearing that there's a strong pocket of, you know, Cogah Heights families that believe in masks. There's a strong pocket that don't believe in masks, so that's one struggle that we might see. And then there was another thing that came up with some data, not specifically to Cogah Heights, but just to some of the, the local districts. About 10%, and that's where, I think it was 10% of families, no matter what, will not be sending their kids back just for fear if there's not a vaccine. So no matter what, I, I just want the other board members to hear that. You know, no matter what happens, it's, August is going to look different. September's going to look different.
And those are great points. In, in some districts, the response was as high as 20%. We know that in our district, our, our parents want the kids back in school, but there's still going to be some, so we know that no matter what we do, we're going to have to have some kind of component in place where those kids can stay enrolled at Cogah Heights, and we're working right now with, the ESC's part of five ESC statewide that are trying to develop online curriculums that'll be available to us. So what, and it's going to take some work with the unions. I've already started to talk to them about that, about what that might look like from there, and maybe have a person designated to monitor the online part of that for kids that, whose parents choose not to send them back, because we don't want to say, well, then he can't be part of Cogah Heights, so go to a virtual academy, whatever. We want to keep them enrolled, because we firmly believe that when a vaccine's developed, they're coming back to us. And I think that's, that's what the data's showing right now. The other argument about masks is that, again, is spot on. And the last thing I heard today is that when they were talking about masking these two, these two meetings, that, that the guideline was going to be, they strongly, strongly, strongly recommend that students wear masks. So they're going to put it back on us to say, because we know that we've got a percentage of parents that are saying, my kid's not wearing a mask. He's, he's not wearing a mask, and I got a percentage of parents that are saying, I don't want my kid in class if they're not wearing masks. So we're going to have to navigate that slippery slope as we get closer to, knowing that, that's, until we get in session, until things start moving through, those are going to be bumps in the road that we're going to have to deal with heading into this. So yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Manny. Those are very, very good points, so.
Tom, has there been any further discussions in the meetings you've been in on the status of that Senate bill that you sent to us that essentially would push control down to the local level?
Yeah, that's, that's Senate Bill 320. And the last conference I was on today, that's Senator Huffman's bills, and he'd actually, that would be our decision on how we're going to open and in what way, shape, or form. There's a real strong feeling that that's, they're not going to vote on that. They, they want to be out of session by next week. There's a real strong feeling that they're going to push that out, so they don't vote on it before they break, which means it'll, it'll die for lack of an action. 319 is out in front of it. I just found out today that House Bill 164 was passed today that has everything but the furlough part of it, that 319, so they're going to try to work together like that. But I saw 320, there's a lot of, part of 320's problem is going to be, there's like a lot of really bizarre things written into it, like parental control of some things in the school that really need clarifying, because when I talked with two different groups, they weren't even quite sure what that language meant in the, in the way of law. So, and that was BASS up, the BASS didn't know, and neither did, neither did the First Ring people could interpret what that was. So those are two pieces of legislation that are hanging out there right now. I'm, I'm going to shoot emails off to Representative Crossman and Robinson to ask them then to support 164 moving forward. But you know, we're not in a furlough situation. We could be, and then furloughs are the big sticking point right now, because they're telling us that schools can non-renew, and non-renew is way different than a furlough. If we non-renew, they said, well, you can bring them back. Well, people can go, if they're non-renewed, they're going to go out and find other jobs. And, and actually, from the point where we've heard that the OEA is, will, is going to kind of come to the table and say, no, no way on furloughs. So that, they have a pretty powerful lobbying group. So I think that's why it was pulled out of that 164. That was a sticking point for 319. So that, that's where we're at legislatively on some of that right now. Senator Dolan's legislation is going to sneak into a bill somewhere, and we were told today, it may not even be an education bill. It may be a rider on something else. So the last thing I heard today was to stay tuned. And what that bill will do, that will give us some relief from what we have to pay back to the state. It'll, that'll relieve that, the burden of that, those cut, those, those cuts a little bit on us, so that'll save us some of that $194,000. So I know Matt's going to be shaking as he writes that check, but hopefully they can get that legislation through so we can lessen that number a little bit for us also. And again, in Tom Cox, I laid out the, what the onsite graduation will look like. Again, that's all pending. It's that whole 10-person mask gathering thing is still kind of hanging up over our head, which is why this Sunday, I did not extend invitations to any of the board members, because I can still only have 10 people in the auditorium at a time. So if it was me and, and you guys and, and the advisors, we couldn't bring the kids in. So we're going to, we're bringing the kids in in five-minute sets. They're going to be videotaped. They'll be able, they can bring five family member, members with them. They can get pictures taken with the family members. We're going to get a picture taken inside. We're going to get a picture taken of them turning their tassel, and we're going to get another video of them outside throwing their hat in the air. And, and, and the videographer's going to put all that together. Just as I said before, following the format that we use for our graduation, the senior class officers will do their speeches, and we'll go from there. So it, it sounds like Mrs. Voitek has a pretty good handle on things. Mrs. Connors has been working side by side with her. They did a lot of really good work here lately, looking at videographers and getting that, getting those contracts to us, so we can get that on the agenda as well. So any questions on any of that? That's a lot going on right now, but.
I, I have a question that's related to Mrs. Voitek's request I, I have a question. It's related to Mrs. Voitak's request to the board about making, uh, some type of a recording to, uh, congratulate the class. Yeah. Oh, I was wondering what level of detail. Is she just looking for a kind of a one sentence, five second statement? I'm not sure what she was looking for. Do you have any idea or other?
And I wasn't, I wasn't aware that she had reached out to you guys, um, until I started getting some emails about, about Sunday from you, you people that, that, what, what she said today is that if the board members wanted, uh, they were going to add to it, uh, just maybe a statement, a good luck to the senior class of 2020. We know this has been a different year. Something short and sweet to, to the seniors, uh, to, as a recognition to them. And you can, if you record at home and, and email, uh, email that to her, then she will make sure that the videographer gets that spliced into the, to the video as well.
Okay. All right. That, that helps me because I was unsure what exactly. We usually don't have a, an active role in the conundrum aside from being on stage presence. And so I was uncertain about what she was looking for. Great.
And this way, this one actually time-wise is going to work out differently because we don't have a band, uh, we don't have the orchestra, uh, we don't have the choir. So, you know, we're going to fill in, uh, we've got a student that's going to sing the National Anthem for us in the beginning and the alma mater at the end, and we're going to add that as a kind of an overplay. And, and I kind of gave them, I, I said to the, the class officers that, you know, you, you can, you can speak a little bit longer because I, we don't, the, the, you know, we don't want it to last 20 minutes. We certainly want to, uh, to, to get them their appropriate recognition. And I've, I've seen some of the speeches already and the, and the kids have really done a nice job of the speeches. So.
I wanted just to say thank you to, to you, Tom, and the staff. I just, I know these times are really awful for the graduates. But I feel like, um, in, in some kind of silver lining way, this class is almost getting some pretty awesome memories, you know, that they're going to be able to have on video. And, um, it, it's almost like more personalized, I think, in a way, that there's going to be able to be a bunch of people popping up and, and sending them messages that they'll have for life. So thank you for all that, you know, you guys are doing to make it special for, for the class of 2020.
And that, you're welcome. And I think the class officer, the class advisors have really done a great job with this, uh, Desiree and, uh, and Becky. And again, we're going to be back at it next week because we're going to, we're going to have everything measured out for the in-person one. And when I submit that plan to the health department, they will know, they will, we, we will show them six-foot increments on everything. We're going to put markings on the concrete out in front of the building. We're going to put mark, we're going to put the chairs on the football field space. We're going to have markings in the bleachers where the kids are going to sit. We are, we, if, I'm going to make it very difficult for them to say no to us if, if the mask gathering gets lifted. So.
Any worry about the turf?
No, that, you know, that's why we went, we're going to put the chairs on there. We thought of a lot of different things, but the, the chairs will be fine. I, you know, some, I, I about had, had a fit. I saw some of this, one, one school, they brought the cars onto the football field because they have the big scoreboard where they can project onto. I thought that, that football coach had to be having a heart attack. I can't even imagine. Um, but they were parked on the AstroTurf because it, it was, I don't know if it was stolen because they've got a big screen over there and on their score. But one of them showed the, the video on, on the scoreboard and they literally parked the cars on the football field. That just is asking for trouble with some kid wanting to spin his tires or, you know, on the way out the door or something. So, um, yeah. And there's, uh, and the drive-in theater over the, in North Ridgeville, uh, is getting a, a real workout with some of the places over here on the west side using it for their videos. And in fact, we got a free fireworks show the other night. Uh, one of the, one of the schools that had their graduation also threw some fireworks in with it. So.
Yeah. Just in Twinsburg is doing theirs out in, uh, out east or southeast. I can't remember where that one is.
Yeah, there, yeah. I saw the drive-in theater that, uh, they were using as well. Yep.
That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Evans. Um, well, moving on then, I might, we might as well combine the board discussions and board committee reports and, uh, comment sections. Uh, those, uh, then the board members have, uh, items that they'd like to discuss or comments or committee reports?
I do have one. If you want, if anybody else wants to go first, Mark?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks.
Okay. Um, we discussed in our last meeting, oh gee. I'll say, doing this meeting this way gets to be awkward at times. I just lost my document when I touched it with my finger.
Yeah.
Somebody else might want to go while I'm trying to find this document again.
Okay. How about Mrs. Schukert? Do you have anything for tonight?
Um, I just want to say the last few days, Mr. Dobbins and I participated in the, um, the interview process of, um, for the assistant superintendent. Um, and I just want to thank, um, I think Mr. Evans for initiating the process. But it's always great to be part of something like that, um, where you're collaborating with other staff members and just other people that are passionate about the district. And, um, I'm excited for things to come. And I just, you know, it, it just was two days spent well. So thank you, Mr. Evans, for, you know, including us as board members in the process.
I appreciate the participation. Those are, those are some grinding days with important decisions to be made. So I truly appreciate that.
And I think there were some, uh, some, uh, many pearls of wisdom and some, uh, errant string pieces of documentation that, uh, we may benefit from if we have a chance to go over at some point. But, uh, very interesting, uh, presenters. And, uh, I, as Ms. Schukert said, I'm very appreciative of, of you and everyone who participated to make sure that, that, uh, we, um, arrived at, at the best conclusions or best outcomes possible.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Naaman, do you have anything this evening?
Uh, no, just, much as one thing, I just wanted to echo what Mrs. Schukert was saying about the thank you to Tom Evans, the class advisors for, for making that, um, you know, the graduation special. It is tough times. And I know that we're going to try to go ahead and go forward with the, an in-person, but have that backup plan. I think it's going to make sure that, that they have something special to have the memories. And I think that they do have some unique memories from these, these messages as well as like the adopt a senior program and those types of things. So I think that you all did a great job of, of trying to make this special and really trying time. So thank you very much. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Edder, do you have anything this evening?
I was going to echo the sentiments that, uh, Joe Naaman said because I think it's great that they are, um, doing this virtual graduation for these, uh, students who, you know, missed out in, in person on the different, uh, activities that they normally would have done their senior year. And, um, I just want to say thanks again to, um, Mr. Evans for, uh, doing that generous, uh, gesture of putting a freeze on his pay increase. And, um, I am curious if we're ever going to have the state of the state schools, if that's ever going to be rescheduled with the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Mrs. Edder. That, the, the emails have been going back and forth. Originally they, uh, wanted to do something virtually that they recorded and they were talking about actually this week. And then apparently, uh, uh, Flash had some, Florence had some conflicts. So, um, April was going to recontact us. I told them, Ben and I both said we could be available and I think Bob Mangrick did too, uh, whenever, you know, they, they needed us and we could get on and we could zoom in, record it or however they wanted to do it. Um, much in the same format, talking about, you know, the, the schools. And I, it is their largest attended event of the year and then have, uh, but I, I think Flash had had some conflicts uh, and due in large part to some of the things that reopened. Apparently he was now busy when he wasn't busy before. So April has been in contact with us. Uh, I pretty much told him, you tell me when and I'll be there and we'll, we'll record whatever, uh, we need to and, and get that going. So.
Well, hopefully it'll be not so soon because you've got a lot on your plate right now.
Mr. Sujaki, have you had any luck with recovering that document?
Yes, I did. I got it back on my screen. So let me go through it before I lose it again. Um, discussion is the CBCC board meetings. At our last meeting, there were eight out of the nine members were physically in attendance with mum, one member calling in on the phone. Half of the attendees wore masks during the meeting. Uh, most of the districts are continuing remote board meetings at the present time. Superintendent Mangus indicated that since the CBCC building is open, admittedly on a very limited basis, but it is open, classes are occurring. Uh, some instructions taking place on, on site, then would be consistent to have the CBCC board meetings on-site in person as well. Uh, one board member in attendance did indicate she would prefer to have the career center meetings remotely and would probably attend subsequent meetings remotely for the foreseeable future. So that would give us seven on-site and two remote, potentially. Um, because of the uncertainties during these times, as we all know, things are changing by the, by the day or certainly by the week, um, it was decided to determine future meetings on a monthly basis. Specifically if four or more members, it's a nine-member board, four or more members request remote attendance, the meeting will be done remotely, online. Otherwise, the meeting will be on-site with, uh, three or fewer members calling in. So that's where we stand. Um, we've got an agenda meeting tomorrow. Uh, we'll see what, if anything new comes up. We are doing one thing a little differently for our executive sessions. We're meeting with executive session, specifically our next one is evaluation. So the whole meeting is executive. You know, open the meeting on Facebook, uh, Facebook, FaceTime or one of those, right? You know, open the meeting in a public access session and then we'll shut that down and stay with Google meets or Zoom, whichever one we're using, as the executive session. And at the end, we'll bring the public one back up. That way the members won't have to switch it and out like we're doing tonight. So a little, little different approach.
Okay. Well, thank you for that update and, and please, uh, keep us updated as to how the CBCC board, uh, manages its meetings or conducts its meetings. I think it's, it's relevant for us.
Yes. And I will, uh, as I hear things in the other districts, I'll pass those along as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there any other discussion among the board tonight or committee reports, comments? Hearing none, I'll move on to future agenda items. Are there any, uh, agenda items that we'd like to put on future agendas? Um, I would just note that Mr. Evans sent around a, an invitation to a July board meeting that had been, um, uncertain, but now we have one, we've kind of been scheduled, right?
Correct. And I wish I had the date in front of me. It's, I think it's the third Wednesday of July.
July 29th.
Thank you. Everybody responded positively. So we'll, we'll focus on that. Thank you.
But it was six o'clock and not seven o'clock, right?
Yeah, I, I snuck it up an hour earlier. If that's, if we're still doing things Zoom-wise, I, I.
That's fine. Just, just for, just wanted to put it out there because, you know, put it in my, my mind for what time it's supposed to be.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
We're going to have to eat dinner early or wait till we're done?
So true, so true. Um, well, unless we don't have, unless we have no other, uh, future agenda items, I'll move on to the informational items. Uh, upcoming regular meetings are scheduled, uh, Wednesdays at 7:00 PM on the following days, June 24th, August 12th, August 26th, September 9th, and September 23rd. I would now like a, a motion to move that the board adjourn to executive session pursuant to ORC 121.22G1 for the purpose of considering employment and consum, and compensation of personnel of the school district. I make that motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Uh, sounds like, uh, Mr. Naaman got a second. Is there any discussion? None? Uh, so Mr. Muccio, would you call the roll then, please?
Mr. Dobbins?
Aye.
Mr. Naaman?
Aye.
Mrs. Edder?
Aye.
Mrs. Schukert?
Aye.
Mr. Sujaki?
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0. It is 7:43 PM. And, uh, am I correct in understanding that no action will be taken after we return from executive session?
Correct.
Okay. No action will be taken after we return from executive session. We are now adjourned to executive session.
Is Edder back now? Hey, everybody back.
Okay, so, um, we are now reconvening into open session from executive session. It's 8:27 PM. Mr. Muccio, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Edder?
Here.
Mrs. Schukert?
Here.
Mr. Sujaki?
Here.
Mr. Naaman?
Here.
Mr. Dobbins?
Here. Five present, none absent. Um, they, I guess the next item would be adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Second.
All right. So Mr. Naaman made a motion to adjourn. May I have a second?
Second.
I'll second it. Okay. I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The motion passes 5-0. It's 8:27 PM and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone. Bye.
Stay safe.